July 6, 2023, at Mount Pleasant Planning Commission Meeting. Ms. Poo- Pood- Gudeco, I'm sorry. Will you take role?
Devaney?
Here.
Friedrich?
Here.
Avels?
Here.
Honig?
Here.
Erwin? Ebsen, Kingsworthy? Ebsen, Leish?
Here.
Nicholas? Ebsen, Wardman?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is approval of the June 1st, 2023 regular meeting minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the June 1st, 2023 work session minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the zoning board of appeals report. Commissioner Friedrich?
Madam Chair, we did not meet.
Thank you. And next item on the agenda is communications.
We did not receive any communications.
Thank you. And next item on the agenda is SUP 2309.
Thank you. So the first application that we have for tonight is a special use permit for an axe-throwing bar and catering establishment. This proposal is located at 1711 South Mission Street. It's an existing strip mall. And they will be occupying the third store from left to right. This location is in CD5, Urban Center Character District. And the whole site is about six acres. And the applicant is JCB Entertainment LLC, Julia Baker. So the applicant is planning on doing internal renovations of the entertainment establishment and catering business in different phases. So JBC- JCB Entertainment is targeting to open the Vahala franchise late summer, early fall of 2023. The Viking theme venue will also offer cornhole entertainment, aside from axe-throwing. Its clientele ranges from families to professionals. And then there are also going to be two local business owners that anticipate to use the large kitchen area since the proposal here is to do an axe-throwing establishment with a bar. And they have a- the location has a really large kitchen area where China One used to be located. And so Jean Wood from Woodshop Social would use the space to provide catering services. And Kristy Moses, who is a local, also would- from Central Fusion LLC, would use the space to expand her tortilla chips and salsa, small business. So this is quite a combination of uses. And the reason why they are here today is because of the bar component to it that requires a special use permit. The other uses are allowed as a right. So after securing the liquor license, then the applicant would open the bar and start offering alcoholic beverages. The occupancy will be limited to 95 persons with a minimum of 25 seats, provided this is a requirement from the Downtown Development Authority Liquor License. The applicant aims to have seven employees. The proposed hours of operations will be Tuesday to Friday from 4:00 to 10:00. And then Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And Sunday from noon to 8:00 p.m. And the applicant stated that those hours do not conflict with other businesses in the area. For example, Omelets &amp; More, they are mostly busy during the morning and lunchtime. And then they would be doing mostly, you know, afternoon and evening in this location. And there aren't really a lot of surrounding residences. So the surrounding land uses here are on the north, we have Mint, who came for a special use permit for a marijuana retailer, and Omelets &amp; More. And then we have Forum Apartments located on the east, south Salvation Army, and west Firehouse of Central Square. This is an image from the store to date. So China One Buffet just closed, I believe, just a couple of weeks ago. Pretty recent. And this is the back of that mall area. And when looking into the general standards for special use permits, I did not see any issue with the proposal. Again, they're not doing any site changes. They're just going to be doing all the entertainment within the building. So no issues with potential noise and things of that nature. When looking at the apologies for the Class 1 restaurant, but when looking at the specific special use requirement, in this case is a bar, the property cannot be adjacent to or within 50 feet of the property's zone, CD3L or CD3. And this was also compliant. So staff recommendation, pretty straightforward. My understanding is that bars still require a Michigan food law. And so the recommendation here is to approve SUP 23-09, subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall comply with the Michigan Food Law Act 92 of 2000 and maintain compliance with all applicable statutes and rules for bars at all times. The applicant shall comply with the requirements of public works, public safety, and building safety. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? If the applicant would like to come up? Is the applicant here?
On Zoom. She's on Zoom.
Oh.
She's going to be on the stream, so on Zoom. And Julia?
Yes. You have the- Mm-hmm. Okay. Hello, everyone. I am Julia Becker. I have lived in Mount Pleasant for 21 years now. Raised my kids there, very active in the community. And I recently had the opportunity to throw some axes and kind of fell in love with it. So I started looking for franchise opportunities to bring to Mount Pleasant. I think it would be a really fun, multi-use type of venue for the area. There's not typically a whole lot of entertainment-type activities for the folks in Mount Pleasant. I had fantastic, positive responses from a few Facebook posts about opening this business. Everyone's really, really excited about it and can't wait for it to open. So the other wonderful thing that I'm really excited about is being able to offer the kitchen space as a commercial kitchen space for a couple of other small business owners in the Mount Pleasant area. I love the idea of working together and everybody benefits. Anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. I will open up public comment for this hearing. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment, whether here in person or on Zoom or elsewhere.
I believe that all Zoom participants are with the applicant teams. If not, please raise your hand on Zoom.
No one raising their hand. I will close public comment and open up discussion.
Move to approve SUP 2309, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall comply with the Michigan Food Law Act 92 of 2000 and maintain compliance with all applicable statutes and rules for bars at all times. Two, the applicant shall comply with the requirements of public works, public safety, and building safety.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is SUP 2310 and SPR 2315.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just going to wait a little bit for the slides to pop up on the screen. SUP 2310 and SPR 2315 is for a special use permit for an adult-use marijuana retailer and site plan review. The applicant is EAC Industries LLC, representative is Calvin Pata. And the current location is occupied by Denden the Mattressman. And I did hear from them that they are looking for another location in town, a bigger location. So hopefully, they can find a building that works for them and then they can relocate as opposed to go somewhere else. But this applicant is proposing marijuana retailer. And I just wanted to clarify that they initially had proposed a processor facility as well, together with a retailer. But because this location is in CD4, we don't allow processor, we just allow retailer. And so the applicant decided to still proceed with the retailer SUP. The site is currently 0.61 acres, and this is the aggregate of the two lots. The- just a little bit more about the existing building. So the building is two floors, and they're going to be doing the first floor, the retailer, and the basement is going to be occupied for their office and storage. And they're not going to be proposing- Well, they are going to be proposing a major site renovation and some building facade renovations and internal renovations. And then there is a lot of landscaping that's being added onto this property. So it's going to be a pretty big change from what we have there, considering it's more of an industrial-like with the wholesale establishment. The initially proposed hours of operation- operations are 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. daily. Those are the maximum hours allowed for retailers under the special use permit criteria. But they may be adjusted within that timeframe, depending on how the applicant decides to proceed. So land uses and zoning of surrounding properties are as follows on this slide here. You have Crepple Ford on the north, across from Pickard. And then east, Isabella Bank. South, we have two residences and a vacant lot. And we also have another residence on the west, which triggered screening requirements from this proposed use. So these are the current conditions built from the sidewalk at Pickard, looking southwest. This is a view from Russell Street, looking north. When analyzing the general standards for special use, we did not see any potential impact that's not being mitigated. As you know, retailers may generate some odor. However, in this situation, they are- the applicant is going to be working mostly with packaged products. So we don't foresee a lot of odor issues. And everything else with lighting and then security enhancements are going to be done up to code. Regarding the special use conditions, as always, we just make the condition that the applicant has a successful license from the state and maintains compliance with the state rules. They are not anymore co-locating. They're just proceeding with the retailer option, so not applicable. And then odor control requirements are- always need to go to the county for a mechanical inspection. So that's also recommended as a condition of approval. And then specific standards for adult-use marijuana, they are meeting all of those standards. And then the co-location between grow and processors is not applicable since they're not in the industrial district. So going forward with the site plan review. So this is an image of the site plan. One thing to note here is from East Pickard Street, they are proposing an in-only on that existing driveway. That driveway is grandfathered, is a little bit wider than what we require, which is 24 feet. But they are doing in-only only there just to make a better side flow and reduce the potential conflict onto Pickard Street. And so especially, I guess, vehicles and potential trucks, they would be coming in from Pickard and exiting on Russell. And they are adding a left turn arrow only. So the- the flow of the site is not impacting onto the residential area as well. And then you can see that there are many trees that are being added, parking islands to comply with our parking regulations. And then screening onto the west. The south screening is existing, so they're going to maintain that. The dumpster is going to be added as an enclosed dumpster, according to the rules. And the only thing is that I couldn't tell if there's a recycling bin there as well, which is a requirement. And then with the building, I guess I can go in the next slide, but oh, bike racks. Yeah, bike racks are located on the north of the site, close to the curb as a permitted encroachment in that situation. And then just looking more into the floor plan, as I mentioned before, the sale area is going to be located at the first floor. The first floor is slightly raised, so that's why you see a ramp there in the atrium area. And then clients will be able to come in, pass the security doors, and then come to the retail area. And that hallway at the back are going to be for restrictive use for staff. And then that would lead staff down to the basement where they're going to have their offices and storage and a space, the kitchen area for the- the staff. So going more into detail with the site plan review, they comply with the information that they provided. The lot width, they- they are separate and they are not exceeding the maximum amount because the property line is not crossing or it's- the building is not crossing a property line. We don't need to require them to merge the lots. They can keep it separate, so potentially in the future, that parking lot can be developed since we don't require parking. But that's just a note, because I know that we did have to ask lot mergers in the past. And then setbacks, they're not complying with the front setback requirement for just a little bit. But it's fine. The building is grandfathered. And then they are complying with the other setbacks. Building standards, height is under the maximum height permitted. Bicycle parking is an allowed encroachment. I mentioned about vehicle or parking standards. They are providing 21 parking spots. And then they are providing more than what's required for ADA parking spots. I talked about the driveways. And then with bicycle parking, they are exceeding the requirements. They're roughly doing a ratio of one per every 3.5 parking, vehicle parking spaces, as opposed to one per five. Private landscape and fencing, the proposed landscape demonstrates that the proposed parking lot complies with the requirements, as I mentioned before. And I would say that it even exceeds that. It provides four islands as opposed to one. It's required one per 32 parking spots. And then, yeah, so I think we're going to have a pretty nice-looking landscape area there. Streetscape, this proposal here is constituted in improvement. And there will be a new certificate of occupancy that will need to be issued. Therefore, streetscape requirements get- they get triggered. For that, they need to add anything that's missing on the street. So they have sidewalks, but they don't have street trees. Over there in Pickard, as you know, there is really limited space between the sidewalk and the curb. And there is a provision in the zoning that allows me and DPW to waive that condition. However, I think that they can provide that within the first lot layer. They are already providing many trees there. It's just a matter of making sure that the spacing is compliant with the every 30 feet that we have. They may have to add one- add one more on Pickard. And then on Russell Street, they would need to add trees there to comply with this provision. And I believe that they could fit there. And it's a more residential road, so maybe that makes sense to provide shading. Screens, as I mentioned, they do need to screen the parking lot from adjacent properties that are residential. So they're adding that on the west, and it's compliant. However, the screening from the parking lot onto the street is- I couldn't tell if it's compliant. They have to provide either a wall or an evergreen hedge. And in the landscaping material, I couldn't see if the hedge would be fully compliant. So I'm just asking for more information to make sure that they are complying with that. Or off-street loading, let me see. So yeah, I mentioned the recycling, so that would be another condition of approval. And signs, they did not submit a sign permit, which is fine. It usually comes afterwards. And so it's a condition of approval from building safety. In lighting, they did state that they would be complying with the city ordinances. Therefore, the staff report suggests that the commission should approve SUP 23-10 and SPR 23-15, subject to the following conditions. The applicant must obtain the adult-use retailer state license and maintain compliance with all applicable state statutes and rules at all times. The applicant shall ensure that the number and the spacing of trees located along Pickard Street, within the first lot layer, and Russell Street meets streetscape requirements for throughfare trees set forth in Section 154.416. B. Ensure that the landscaping buffer along East Pickard Street complies with the street's screen requirements in CD4 districts as set forth on Table 154.405. A. Ensure that proposed enclosed dumpster complies with Section 154.411. C, which requires solid waste receptacles for both trash and recycling. The county mechanical inspector shall approve the building's air handling system and finds it in compliance with Section 154.410. B. Point four, paragraph B, sub-paragraph seven. The applicant shall comply with the requirements of public works, public safety, and building safety. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have one. Could you go back to the parking map?
The parking map?
Yeah, I just want a clarification.
Yeah.
So I thought what I heard you say is, coming off Pickard, people, they're going to have a lane just to turn right, or an entrance just to turn right into there.
Oh.
Is there also an exit onto Pickard?
So there's no exit on Pickard, so it would be just in. And then the- the right- sorry, the left turn only is on Russell. So when exiting the site-
Okay.
You have to turn right on Russell and then use Russell's and Pickard intersection to then turn right on Pickard if you want to keep going right.
So you can turn in from Pickard, but you can't exit from Pickard?
Exactly.
And you can turn left onto Russell, but you can't turn right onto Russell?
Yes.
So it's a large residential neighborhood behind there. So if somebody's driving from there, they have to drive up Russell, turn onto Pickard left, and then come back in?
If they want to reach this tour?
Yeah.
That's true.
That seems like a safety hazard to make people have to-
Go on Pickard.
If they could come in on Russell and exit to the left, I think that would alleviate that. But I think forcing people to turn left. Anybody coming up Russell couldn't use that actual entrance. They have to go onto Pickard, which is busy.
The applicant was going back and forth between options. I think their main reason to keep the side flow was to try to reduce the amount of traffic that could go to the residential neighborhood. And this is just with the general standards that we have for SUPs to reduce potential impacts. But I think they would be open to perhaps add an in option onto the Russell driveway.
Yeah, that would make me feel better.
Yeah, because then they can-
That's a large residential neighborhood too, and people live over there who want to go there.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense.
Okay.
Do you know if they were to add the entrance and exit off of Russell, would there be enough spacing for both on that drive?
17 feet, so I think so, but-
It would be tight. Usually, we have- we require around at least 10 for each, so a 20-foot. This is for residential driveways, commercial usually slightly more than that. 24 comes from 12 and 12 to be comfortable. In this case, it wouldn't end up being a shared situation. I guess one could say that with the narrow driveway on the south, even if they do an in-and-out on Pickard, the residential neighborhood will still have to find its way from Pickard, right?
There's not a light there, so they'd have to turn just whenever they had an opportunity.
I'm assuming it's just so people aren't using Russell to get in over there still because of the residential neighborhood? Okay. Now, am I missing something? This left-hand turn, is it just one of those, please just go left, nothing's stopping you from taking a right?
It is one of those, yeah. I mean, it's hard to enforce that.
Yeah, okay. All right, I thought I was losing my mind for a second. I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
In reality, unfortunately, people don't follow rules.
What do you mean? You know, the movie theater, right every time? So, okay. It's a toughie.
If they're not having a co-located processing center there, are they reusing the space that they had set aside for them, or are they just leaving it empty?
They are just using that for security now, for the camp- the setup, I guess.
Video vault or whatever.
Sorry?
The video vault or-
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, they're not going to be using the space, the whole space, no, yeah.
Any other questions for staff?
I guess I have one more then about the driveway. Because it's on a residential street, would they have to get a variance to get it wider than 17 feet?
No, they can certainly increase that width. They don't have a lot of space with the building there, that concrete sidewalk. I don't know why that is. The applicant would be able to answer.
Okay.
Yeah, they have their design team.
Okay, great.
If the applicant would like to come up, is the applicant here in person?
Yeah, the applicant is on Zoom. So Griffin, I believe, you would like to speak first, and then John, but you have the floor.
Yes, I'm gonna- I'm sorry. My name is Jackie Lingwith. I'm going to introduce Griffin. We're with Polichella Law Firm, Cannabis Attorneys of Michigan. We have all of the owners here, Kelvin Pata, Marlo Satom, and Bruce Kello. And then we do have the design team, John Guma, who can answer your specific questions. And Griffin is just going to give you a brief sort of overview. And thank you.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. So basically, what we are proposing is for there to be an adult-use retail establishment at 1322 East Pickard. We plan to- App pit plans to follow all applicable zoning ordinances, including not limited to anything related to security or waste disposal, given that we are no longer using- going to be using the site and co-locating a processor there. Because of that, we are going to not have as much waste or odor control management purposes. But same time, we're going to make sure that we have that negative air filtration system and comply with all applicable odor and waste management protocol. And we also will comply with all external lighting ordinances. If external lighting is added, there will not be any freestanding. It will be external wall packs. And we look forward to working with the city of Mount Pleasant. We hope to form a long relationship and do business here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I'd like to hear what you have to say about the driveway issue.
I think I can speak on that. My name is John Guma. My firm is responsible for providing these drawings. As far as the driveway issue, are you talking about the Russell side or the Pickard side?
Well, I'd like to hear the thinking for both, because turning right out onto Pickard seems like it's not too hazardous. But mostly, the issue of having people in the Russell neighborhood have to drive onto Pickard to come back into the business just seems too much of a ask for them.
So let's talk about Russell. So Russell, the existing driveway is approximately 17 feet, 7 inches. And we have approximately 8, 10-foot sidewalk on the rear of the building. If we were to eliminate that sidewalk, I think it'd create a bigger hazard of somebody trying to pull in and possibly hitting the building without any- without the vehicles, tires hitting the curb. As far as exiting Pickard, I don't have a problem. An entrance and an exit off of that, if that will help relieve some traffic off of Russell. Unfortunately, it's kind of difficult to make it a two-way entrance, egress and e- ingress and egress off of Russell because it's just narrowed. We are at the property line of the rear of the building. We may have a scenario or a solution for that. There's a vacant parcel right behind it. And I believe that we may be in talks with the current owner on doing addition- on doing additional parking. If we do get that, then we definitely can accommodate easier ingress and egress off of Russell.
You think it's possible with the seventeen-inch or seventeen-foot driveway to just to have right turns, left turns, and people turning in and out there? Or really, it is the curbing for the sidewalk that you'd be concerned about?
Yeah, if I can, if I were to eliminate that sidewalk, it'll still be tight. And I don't know what your ordinance is as far as your ingress egress. But a typical parking space at your malls, at your retail stores are ten-wide, twenty-deep. So if we use that ten-wide math, multiply that by two, that gives you twenty. Somebody making a, a left turn in or even a right turn in off of Russell, you know, the bigger SUVs these days, they may clip the building. Then in order to protect the building, I would have to put some pipe bullards there, which would take another foot away. I'd rather not put a pipe bullard. I think they're a little bit uglier. Rather, they're uglier than a sidewalk just to protect the building. Also, you know, you have in the winter conditions, the snow removals. These people are careless. They'll just plow up and right through the building and, you know, without a curb or some type of barrier there, there's no stopping them.
If I may, uh, my name is Marlo Satam. I'm one of the applicants here. It's a pleasure to be on this Zoom with you guys. I just wanted to put it on the record that I did have a conversation with Manuela. And we did the left turn only off of the side street there in, in favor of what you guys would call for as, as far as, you know, regulations or whatever, for lack of better terms. But we're open to anything there. We're, we're open to an entrance and exit. We're open to whatever you, you guys would think would be the better solution here. So with it being ten feet or seventeen feet and residential requiring ten, seven feet plus the sidewalk with, with some, uh, with a little bit of an approach on the curb, the curb, you know, around the approach, I think we could get it done on an entrance and an exit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. I will open up public comment if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on this hearing. I don't see anyone in person.
No one on Zoom or email?
Thank you. I will close public comment and open up discussion.
What do you guys think? Is that a safety hazard or? I think most of their traffic is gonna come off Pickard, so I don't think it's gonna be a big deal, but.
I mean, it's a fair, it's a fair question, fair ask, and I think the applicant said a good job explaining it. Because, I mean, my concern would be if, you know, you do, I just don't want people, you don't want to create too much onto Russell.
I see that.
That's, that's the main thing, and I know that's where the honor code left-handed turn comes in.
I think in a lot of ways so. I mean, we're used to that not being able to take left-hand turns too well in Mount Pleasant with student traffic. So, I mean, if a person from the neighborhood was really wanting to enter the bill, I mean, they could easily just go over to Brown and up and around and.
And well, is there on-street parking right there on Russell?
No, I don't believe so.
If, if I may jump in for one more second, I just want to remind everyone that it's already a retail place with exit and entrance, and it's been like that for years.
I'm aware of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, and also they're, I mean, they're looking into getting additional parking, which I think will kind of eliminate any concern and I, I don't really see it being much of an issue. I think it's a fair question to ask, but I think it's been, I'm okay with going forward with it thanks to the applicant, but I do appreciate you raising, because I look at this, I'm like, God, this, ooh. So I'm glad we talked about it, but I, I feel better moving forward.
Okay.
But anyone else want to barging? Let me know.
Any further discussion or motion?
Get my water. I'm going to move to approve SUP twenty-three-dash-ten and SPR twenty-three-dash-fifteen, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant must obtain the adult-use retailer state license and maintain compliance with all applicable state statutes and rules at all times. Two, the applicant shall, A, ensure that the landscaping buffer along East Pickard Street complies with street screen requirements in CD four districts as set forth as a table one-five-four-dot-four-zero-five-dot-A. B, ensure that the proposed enclosed dumpster complies with section one-five-four-dot-four-eleven-dot-C, which requires solid waste receptacles for both trash and recycling. Three, the county's mechanical inspector shall approve the building's air handling system and finds it in compliance with section one-five-four-point-four-ten, paragraph B, section, all right?
Point B.
Point B, I apologize. Thank you. Paragraph four, subsection four, paragraph seven. I butchered that. I apologize. The applicant shall comply with the requirements of public works, public safety, and building safety.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is SUP twenty-three-eleven.
Thank you. Just wait a second to get the slides on the screen.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the third case that we have today is SUP twenty-three-dash-eleven for the Michigan Zeta Chapter of Phi Delta Theta Fraternity. The representative here today is Nolan Camu. This is located on ten-twenty-three South Main Street. It's a house currently a rooming dwelling, and they are pursuing an application for special use permit for a registered student organization. Site is around zero-point-eleven acres. So the reason why the applicant is applying for the SUP here is to, so they can put a sign showing that they do have a registered student organization living on the premises. And also, I would say that they have been there for a couple of years. And so this will bring the property into conformance with the use requirements that requires a special use permit. The, in twenty-fifteen, there was a variance that was approved by the ZBA, and I just put that as a context for when the rooming dwelling was rebuilt and they added one more occupant. Right now, they are at full capacity, six occupants living on the premises. And, and then they are not proposing any site alterations, facade renovations, except for the signage that they will apply after this approval. The land uses and zoning on the surrounding properties are basically all rooming dwellings. And on the street, just within that block or the next block, we have several other RSOs. And so I do not see the proposal being not in context. This is what the house looks like today. Current conditions, view from Main Street, looking east. And this is their parking lot that has enough spaces for the occupants, and this is a view from the alley looking northwest. So when analyzing the general standards, I found that all the answers provided by the applicant in our assessment were able to meet the special use conditions. There are a few special conditions that are specific for RSOs. So they were able to meet all of them, and I'll just note that the second one here was modified in a text amendment last year. This would not be an issue for this particular property, but it would allow the neighbors to also apply for RSOs in the future. We used to not allow any property that was adjacent to an alleyway or across an alleyway from CD three or CD three L, and now we do. They just cannot share a common side lot line with those districts. So the staff recommendation is to approve SUP dash twenty-three-dash-eleven. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
No, no conditions for this one?
No, no conditions. Seems pretty straightforward. I know that the city has a long history with student housing, but they've been there. I didn't hear any complaints, no communications came through, so.
Any other questions for staff? If the applicant would like to come up?
I'll turn this way because there's no one over here, and I'll just be able to address you all. But thank you for taking the time to review this and thank you for having me tonight. Manuela kind of explained the proposed site description of the project, but essentially just putting a sign on the facade of the house facing South Main Street of just our Greek letters for the organization Phi Delta Theta. I didn't even introduce myself. Let me back up a little bit. My name is Nolan. I currently serve as the president of the organization. I'm gonna be a senior at CMU this fall. But yeah, placing the sign on there, I've already met with Brian ahead of time, and we haven't submitted a sign permit yet, but just kind of talking through the process and making sure everything that we're envisioning will work out, and that meeting went well. But other than that, as Manuela kind of mentioned, bringing us up to standard with the student organization being a part of the house and making it what would be considered an official chapter house under our national organization. Other than that, more than happy to answer any and all questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I have one. Where are you gonna, where are you gonna put the sign? The sign? So on the second floor, Manuel, would you mind going back to where the house is at? Thanks. So the sign would be on that, on the white paneling in between the two windows on the second floor. You kind of see that gap, and then obviously meeting the requirement of the sixteen square feet for the total thing according to the sign permit ordinance. Okay, thank you. Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thanks.
I will open up public comment if there is anyone from the public that would like to comment. I don't see anyone here in person. Is there anyone on Zoom or by email?
No one on Zoom or email.
Thank you. I will close public comment and open up discussion.
Move to approve SUP twenty-three-eleven.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next, I am on the agenda is public comment. This is the last chance for the public to comment at this meeting. If there is anyone that would like to comment. I do not see anyone here in person. Is there anyone online or by email?
No.
Thank you. I will close public comment, and next I am on the agenda is staff report.
So for staff report today, I have a development parcel plan to report back. So development parcel plans are not very common. The last one and the only one that I've seen was in two thousand twenty-one for Burlington. They are triggered when you're doing any development on sites that are more than four acres. But also if you're doing subdivisions on two sites that are greater than four acres in aggregate. So in this case, Wilson Properties on the north part of town, they have a large piece of land that are still not developed. And they are doing some subdivisions onto the north part, north of that big enlargement that came through to the planning commission for a site plan review, I believe, last year. So they are doing some subdivisions there in the north to be able to have developable sites. It's very choppy the way it is right now, so I think that's gonna be a, a good addition as more vacant space in industrial areas in the city. So staff approve that, and JF, let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. If someone would like to make a motion adjourned to the work session?
Move to adjourn to the work session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned. Does anyone need a break before we start the work session?
I'm good.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call the work session for July sixth, two thousand twenty-three to order.
Thank you. So if I could get the slides on the screen, I do have some slides for this one, just because we have quite a few items. The first one is an update to our work session schedule. I did not do one for two thousand twenty-four. I just wanted to start with two thousand twenty-three and make sure that you're all comfortable with it. Reason it did not pop up. Sorry, let me go to the podium. Okay, can you hear me well? Yeah. All right, so the first one is the updated work session, so just to talk a little bit about it. So when I had firstly introduced the schedule, I was anticipating that it was a two-step process with the planning commission, but it's in fact a three-step process. So it's a work session, introduction, and the text amendment, public hearing. And what that would do, because we have so many items and we seem to be busier this year than we were last year with applications, I thought that it would be better to condense the work sessions one after the other and then wait a couple of months and do all the introductions or do two rounds of introductions, public hearing, and then introduction, public hearing. So the way that I have in that memo is to have in September and November the public hearing for text amendments that may come through after our discussions for this year. I don't think anything got delayed with this plan. There are some new items that got pushed a little bit forward because we have some applicants interested in doing development, and this would help them. And so those were flagged as more urgent items that would go first. And then the other items will basically be at the city commission in the first meeting in December. So if you're comfortable with that, yeah, just let me know, and then I will proceed as planned. It's different than what you're used to from Jacob's time, so just wanted to.
Any comments on the schedule? You need us to do a vote on it or?
No, I think just, yeah, the nodding heads or no objections. That's good.
Looks good to me.
All right. So we can go to the next one. So the next item for today is bringing back the institutional uses conversation that we had in June, last, in the last meeting. So we talked basically about three main components to it, so homeless shelters, adult daycare centers, and detox facilities. They are either not allowed today or not recognized by the zoning ordinance. We cannot really place them in any use category that would make sense and that would work for applicants. So the one that you asked me to come back to you is with homeless shelters. What I heard in the last meeting is that you're fine with the idea of all of the three uses here and add them onto the zoning ordinance. Homeless shelters, you just wanted to look more into precedents. So I found two precedents that are slightly different from each other, so Midland and Marquette, and I tried to stick to Michigan, and I'll go to New York City too much. So with Midland, they define transitional housing as a use, and it kind of encapsulates the idea of folks that are moving from the street onto permanent housing. And the definition has a lot of language about supportive services. When speaking with Restoration House, it, they said that, you know, adding too much of that language may make it hard for them to apply. They're still looking into exactly what kind of services they're gonna provide on the premises where they're gonna be relocated. So I think for that purpose, it wasn't very helpful or not necessarily where I'm going forward. I'm trying to keep it simple, if that makes sense, as opposed to over-regulate things. And then applicability, they allow in multiple family districts, regional commercial, light industrial, research districts as well. So it's a pretty wide applicability in, in Midland. Approval process is allowed pursuant to a conditional land use permit, so basically our SUP. The, when I spoke to Jacob, it was easy because Jacob is in Midland. So he did say that he had a successful women's shelter that just got approved without any problems at the public hearing and fully supported by the commissioner. and fully supported by the commissioners. So that, he said that that was very good to hear. Marquette has two definitions. Homeless shelter specifically in supportive housing facility transitional or permanent. Their zoning ordinance is extremely detailed, so I wouldn't say it's similar to what we have. And I think with the farm-based code, we want to go the route of let's allow farm regulate as opposed to use, be the main regulator of zoning. So, but anyhow, with that, I did find the, some ideas with how they define the terms. Supportive housing facility transitional and or permanent had a lot of language about if it's, if folks are living there for the first two years or after two years. And again, I don't think that we should over-regulate. So anyhow, but it was still helpful. And then applicability, the homeless shelter is, has a slightly tighter applicability. It's allowed in mixed use in central business districts. Supportive housing is more broadly allowed onto residential neighborhoods, medium density, low density and multifamily. And that's because it's slightly more permanent than a door, how to call it, than a homeless shelter that, you know, are just potentially seeing different people every day. So approval process for them was also a special land use permit. So I think that from a precedent perspective, I remember you all said, let's just do it permitted as a right, which is very progressive. But it does seem that they subject the uses to an SUP just to take a look at, you know, its site at a time. So what I'm proposing here is to do a transitional housing use, so add that onto our use chart. The reason why I didn't call homeless shelter and transitional housing instead is to accommodate emergency shelters. Who knows if we ever get a climate event and we need to build a quick transitional shelter or use a space as a, as a shelter for a period of time. The definition will be, the proposed definition will be a residential facility that provides temporary accommodations and support services for persons or families requiring interim housing arrangements or who would otherwise be without safe overnight shelter. Proposed applicability will be CD four and CD five, so I try to stick more into the areas that already allow for density since homeless shelter can be pretty dense and even denser than what the district currently allows. I'm proposing that we do subject them to an SUP just in case we want to look at specific site arrangements and flow and how they're going to, you know, bring people in and all of that. And then specific conditions and findings, I'd have those as a question to you if there is anything that's very important to you that we should add onto the SUP conditions. One thing I think would be to regulate density to make sure that we don't have overcrowded shelters. And I did look at FEMA's book on the precedent for shelters that are accommodating people in case of like hurricanes that may need shelter for a slightly bigger time or longer times, timeframes. And that was one person per every forty square feet of building area. And speaking with Restoration House, that would work well for them. So yeah, any questions, thoughts?
Forty square feet per person, that's like a queen-sized bed. That doesn't seem like enough room for, or too dense for a building, really.
It is very dense. The idea is to have bunk beds and that's the problem because when you're adding people on top of each other, you get denser. And the clearance that you need to have in between beds for ADA access is only two point five feet. ADA just requires the parallel parking for the chair. And so in the case of Restoration House, they're even proposing three feet in between beds. So even, you know, more than ADA. But when you compute the space that you may have available and the idea of bunk beds, it gets dense. So yeah, and as a precedent, you know that we use like one per every three hundred for rooming and others, but this is such a different use. That's why I went the FEMA route as opposed to look at our own ordinance for precedents.
How would this apply to those that are currently in use for our local non-disclosed women's shelters that are in residential areas?
So yeah, remember you brought that question and that's one of the reasons why I didn't want to over-regulate. For women's shelter, I understand that they are slightly more permanent than a door service that, you know, Restoration House is trying to do. So for those, I do have a company that wants to build another women's shelter. And I worked very closely with the building safety department to look at building code classifications. And our goal is to stick to multifamily dwelling. So the idea is to not be, not to discriminate about like who, what type of person is living in a location and just look at building safety as a measure of how we should regulate this. So yeah, it wouldn't create non-conformances, that that would be the goal.
Okay.
You would mention Manuel, pardon me, just like you said about services that homeless shelters and I think one of the applicants, they were kind of like pushing back on that. And I mean, wouldn't it be wise that we'd have some sort of incentive for these places to help get people back on their own too, instead of kind of perpetuating a problem of, you know, you can just stay here for an extended period of time? I think it'd be wise to maybe try to look into that. And I know there's a lot you don't want to, you know, there's no silver bullet and people are different, but I'd like to, you know, like you said, we don't want just one shelter and everyone's just boom, 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 with no end in sight. It should be, you know, it should be a place where people go to Mount Pleasant and then they like get on their own too and blah, 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 blah. Anyway, that's kind of where I was going with that. And, but I didn't want to, it raises a good question about our existing women's shelters. If that would conflict, is there a way to just have a women's shelter be its own thing instead of like, I'm with my hands, I apologize. Instead of like, you know, it'd be a homeless shelter, then like a women's shelter would that be its own umbrella? Do you see what I'm saying?
You're thinking of that as a, almost by a right, multifamily dwelling for women's shelters. So they don't have to disclose that they are, just it's a multifamily dwelling.
Yeah, yeah. And I think if we add that in, it calls too much attention to it. If we added separate use. And also then the zoning ordinance becomes too specific to a point that anytime there's an applicant with a use that I don't have a perfect description of it, I cannot assess the closest use category to it. So that's why I'm trying to call it transitional housing. But yeah, I think we could exercise our thoughts on the idea of time. You know, like short-term rentals are defined as no, no more than twenty-eight days. And then we have hotels, motels that are operating more on a day, maybe week basis. And then we don't have anything else. But I would say that, you know, even if we don't define time and women's shelter becoming like in a gray area, that could be either multifamily or a transitional housing use category, then I think that it wouldn't be a problem if it's not new, right? Because they're going to be grandfathered. So it's not that they, we need to all of a sudden apply for the special use permit because they're there.
Yeah.
Time is hard to enforce in part because of the patterns when people check into homeless shelters. My mom ran a homeless shelter when I was a kid and you'd find the coldest days of the year, there was more homeless people than other days when it was the lowest above freezing. So you oftentimes aren't going to have consecutive days. You say thirty consecutive days, well, it's not going to have any teeth to it.
Yeah, no, I'm not thinking about like thirty, like, you know, get in, get out thirty days. I think that's a.
So just regardless of the chronology, there's loopholes as well as there's ways in which people make different mobility decisions that are going to not really, I make that too good a use of our time.
I know the local shelter does try to limit people to sixty days if they can, so.
But then to get back to the support services?
That's, that's more where I was getting at. I don't really, time, I don't care. I just more if like those services are there. And the reason I brought up like the homeless shelter, I didn't want, I didn't want it to be like, well, we can't do anything about services unless it's going to affect like other existing things. That's the only reason I brought that up. So if it's as of right, good, let's do that. But I just want to make sure that existing like services are here, that it's not just a little pit stop, so that's my two cents, but.
Did they, did they push back because there were so many very specific services named and not, instead of it being kind of, we'll provide supportive services? I mean, in general, you know, I mean, maybe if it's broader.
I think we can, yeah, sorry to cut you.
Oh, that's okay.
I think yes, to answer to your question, it was very detailed. It's a whole big paragraph of a definition. I think if we say that either provide that on the premises or you provide that elsewhere and you have a, some sort of deal, you know, with other organizations that provide those supportive services. But I hear the Transitional Housing for Midland says, "An establishment with administrative supervision that provides through permanent facilities and guidance personnel, so permanent facilities and guidance personnel, resident beds, structured or supervised peer group living and limited programming emphasizing social rehabilitation with support and guidance towards the goals of independent living as they transition from institutional living." So yeah, and then I think this language was the worst one. In these situations, the housing is treated as the individual's homes with staffing and services available. The home idea was just, you know, they're going to have a big kitchen, they're going to offer meals, but it's, it was too specific. So I think we can maybe talk about providing either on the premise or through a third party, social rehabilitation support and just leave it broad like that. And then when they come to the special use permit, we can ask them more questions. What is exactly what you're proposing and then go from there.
Are you still thinking about allowing a higher density for those?
So yeah, I'm proposing one per forty. What do you suggest?
I'd like to have people have a little more room than that. And I think in the cases of an emergency shelter, so we have a big weather event here in Mount Pleasant and a tornado was ripped through town and doesn't usually in those cases, the federal or state government kind of overrides everything and, because we're, you see it all over the country where a high school is turned into, and I'm sure that the high school doesn't have to go get a permit to do that. So I don't know if we really have to worry so much about the emergency situations rather than just the, what we're looking at here currently is homeless housing. So I just think that's super tight and I don't know if.
Maybe one thing to clarify is that the, when you compute the square footage, you're just talking about the area that's going to be used as living quarters and not everything, right? So.
Not the common areas?
Not common areas. So in the case of the Restoration House, they would be using the first floor for all the daily services and the second floor will be for the overnight accommodations. So that calculation would be for that purpose.
Only.
Of the, yeah, for sleeping. So I could clarify that. I think that's a great point and we should definitely clarify that in the condition.
Okay.
You can think of it as like, I guess, if you had a larger, I mean, if a family was going to share a bedroom space versus, I don't know, I got, you know, if you have, trying to think of how you were describing like with the bed and the bunk bed and had to have a bit more space. I don't know if they would have to spread them out and, you know, I can see a family being like, well, we want to be right together.
Yeah. Okay, I'm fine with it as long as you clarify that that's not total.
Anything else?
I'm curious about the discussion item one B, the applicability of CD four and CD five. Just, it just does seem as though some of our other categories, foster group homes and things like that, in the CD three, I don't know if that's, I mean, it does seem as though homes are often identified as potential places for shelter, shelter situations. Would that, would that be, would that be prohibited in the, in this scenario here? Is it, if we involve CD three, is that, does that just complicate things that much more?
That's a very good point. I think we could talk about adding CD three and since, if you would be comfortable in bringing it as an SUP, then if there is opposition, folks can come forward. But yeah, I think Christine has a good point that we have so many women's shelters out there and I guess you're saying that many of them are in CD three, right? The group homes or?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the previous guidance we had for, about this and it did say, it suggested, for example, that, yeah, foster family group homes, foster family homes, yeah, multiple family dwellings are all in the CD three categories.
Yes, I see. So you're talking about using the group home as a precedent for applicability?
Sure.
But a group home's not as dense as a Restoration House.
Yeah, they're not.
I just think a lot of residents would probably object to that happening. Could be wrong.
Oh, I think you're right.
Let me see. Yeah, from precedent, I think there are precedents that go both ways, more permissive or less permissive. Yeah, Midland, again, it's a multiple family only and then regional, commercial, light industrial, research. So not low density, but then we have the supportive housing allowed in low density in Marquette. I would say that, well, if we think about location, are you, do you see the best location for homeless shelters along, I guess, basically Mission Street and then downtown? Or do you think that these folks would better served in the lower density parts of the city? Another location that was in discussion was behind Emmanuel Village on Bradley, on the west side of town. There is a senior village there and the site is not zoned. It's zoned as CZ, civic zone. But we can always rezone places to be CD four and I was working with Restoration House to rezone that if that was the route that they were going to move forward with. But then they shifted to Main Street. So close to downtown, yeah.
And that seems like a better location than in a primarily residential area to me.
Yeah. Yeah, these folks don't have cars. They need to be welcome dated with iRide, which can go door to door, but the idea is to add even like a bus station to make it easier and bicycle parking, all of that, so.
Well, I like that, yeah, having it more of.
In central locations.
But in that scenario, it makes more sense if it's going to be a higher density, I guess.
Close to services, yeah. And we allow commercial and residential in CD four and five, so. Yeah. Yeah. I guess we don't have a lot of homeless shelters knocking on our doors for the moment, so if in the future we need to revisit this and increase applicability, we can do it. Right? Yeah, okay. So moving forward?
Yeah.
So the next one is applications requiring planning commission approval. Let me just look at my notes from now on. So I did mention this a couple of times, but very briefly since I started. I think I would just start by saying that when looking at the zoning ordinance at first glance, I realized that, yeah, it's a very progressive, it's a farm-based code, but there are so many SUPs on the table. I don't know if it does any service to achieve goals, especially with housing. So I think, yeah, basically what I'm showing here in the slide is if I compute all uses that we have listed and calculate how many of them are allowed person SUP and permitted by right, forty percent, basically. and calculate how many of them are allowed person SUP and permitted by right, forty percent basically is person SUP. And then when you look at each category, residential has the biggest list that requires SUPs. And that's because it has uses like foster care, group homes and things like that. But if you think about the wide range of uses that can be permitted in a city, residential technically would be the least impactful, aside from density and maybe parking concerns or just people being against density, which is definitely a thing. But there are ways that we could continue to regulate uses more specifically without subjecting them to planning commission approval. And that would be what Redevelopment Ready Communities User Guide calls restricted uses. I've seen different names to it, but basically it has all zoning rules apply and then there are specific requirements that apply to that particular use. So I would be able to keep all the specific conditions. It's just that the proposals wouldn't be subjected to the general standards for special use permits. So all the language about creating, addressing packs on adjacent land uses and properties within three hundred feet. So those things will go away, but we can still keep everything as is with the, let's say, room and dwellings, one occupant per every in three hundred square feet. You know, we can still keep all of that and not have them to come to you for approval. And there, I guess my proposal here is to focus more on the residential side and these are the list of uses that require SUPs today. Considering that the, the master plan wants us to be able to have more missing middle housing typologies, I think policy-wise, making it as a right would be a good move. I've heard in conferences that the special permit kills it. That's what people say out there, that anyone looking to develop, especially outside developers, if you want to bring folks from, they're not developing here, Mount Pleasant are used to how we do business. If they see, oh, it's an SUP, oh, the residents are going to be against it, let's not even bother, you know? So, yeah, that's my question to you.
Like the three cases we had today, if you had restricted uses, wouldn't we have had any of those cases? Where they have just.
So if all of them were just restricted, we wouldn't have any cases. But I think the idea would be to keep definitely marijuana, right, to come forward to you. The proposal is just to focus on the residential side and doesn't have to be everything. I know that the city has a long history with rooming dwellings, registered student organizations, so we could keep those as SUPs, but change duplexes, at least ADUs and duplexes. Multiple, multiple family dwellings, I thought about this. I, we could either just allow as a right and be super progressive or we could allow fourplexes as a right and then everything that's denser than that would need to come to you.
I'm sorry, what was that?
So.
The type of housing, I didn't catch.
Fourplexes, so four units in an apartment building. And this is for multiple fa- family dwellings. They are required to come to the planning commission if they're being proposed in low-density residential areas. So CD three, CD three L.
Or we just don't allow those in CD three and CD three L and make them by right everywhere else.
Oh, I believe that that's what we do already.
I don't know.
Yeah, we do allow CD four, CD five to have multiple family dwellings. We don't allow them as a right in CD three. But, yeah, I think just the other argument that I have to you is we have a farm-based code. We define precisely what the setbacks are, what, what the height is, the roof shape, everything. When looking into historically how houses were built, you know, they were just deeper and you could fit several families in a building and from the street. You just think that it's another single-family house, right? So I don't know, in terms of the, how the character of neighborhoods, the farm-based code will protect the character of neighborhoods. It's just a matter of how many neighbors you may have.
I care less about getting into the weeds on specifics of, hey, we should change this or that, but rather I want to speak in support of having less of these things, need a special use permit because from beyond planning commission for just over seven years now, there's a lot of times where it's first Thursday of the month, I go home and thought like, this was something that was very useful to have a community discussion on and people show up on. And there's other times where it's like, in, you know, back when Jacob was here, saying, well, this could have, he could have taken care of this, he didn't need nine of us probing and asking questions about landscaping and all these other things that were tangential to the main point. So thinking as a generalization, trying to find ways that more of the residential categories can be administratively handled by professional planners is something I'd just generally be in favor of.
I agree.
I agree.
I think a lot of the times we have a lot of these, that people just generally feel like somebody should be watching, you know? Not that we're going to change anything and they meet all the criteria anyway, so we're going to, we're going to approve it. But, but I think that's just a fear that we have, that we're, we want to feel like we're looking over the planner's shoulder. But, yeah, I, I agree with Matt. I think a lot of those, those ones could easily just be handled administratively and I think that would make people more apt to make these changes that they want to make rather than, oh, I got to go speak in front of other people and they're all going to be staring at me.
Yeah, we've had some, some times over the years, just where application comes up here, they're getting grilled by one person or another about all these little minutia and then we're not seeing some of the bigger picture issues and planning of a lockability, bikeability, things that you need to have coherent planning for municipality. And so it's like, we can look at some of these bigger picture things while asking the questions about small stuff. That might be a great use of our time and.
Right.
Less about, is it a cedar or something else that's going to be screening, you know, between the building and the sidewalk or something?
Yeah, yeah.
How big that driveway is? And for a high care, get rid of all, oh my gosh, go ahead and you can deal with them.
Okay, so general support, are there any uses in this list that you would say like, no? We need an SUP?
I think, I mean, we've already addressed that with the zoning, right? We already went over and had that discussion of where they could be, where we would prefer that when they're getting approved, where they would be located.
Yeah.
And that.
It's already in the code.
Yeah, it's already in the code and so we're kind of past that at this point because that was a big contention point of like, they couldn't just pop up any random. That was kind of more of where I think the public was really looking for some oversight so they weren't just popping up every random place.
Student housing all over the city.
But I think we hashed that out pretty good when we came up with the code for that of like ideal locations that they were looking forward to be located also.
I kind of feel like, like, short-term rentals could remain an issue just because that could be anywhere.
I agree with that one.
Yeah. Okay.
We've had some questions, people have come in and wrote letters and about like, usually if they've been in agreement, once everybody had a chance to talk about what was going on, but we've had some of those short-term rentals that we've, people weren't too keen about having like Airbnb kind of things of like, and then, then they could, like the one they were talking about, like that they were able to try these special things, like for their special needs family and, and those better. And I, and then they had them for a while and they're like, oh, I didn't realize, okay, then now I'm okay, but. That could be a good one.
How many short-term rentals are authorized in the city currently?
That's a good question. Jacob used to keep track on Airbnb and see if people are doing it illegally. I believe like three from what I've seen. And there's one that may be coming in to you soon.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that as an issue. That's because like yesterday morning I got back from, I spent the fourth in Marquette using a short-term rental myself and there it's like campus, I'm like two hundred and fifty plus, there's a hundred person waiting list for short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Beyond the two fifty. So I see that as like, that's important community conversation they need to have there. But here I've largely found it's been communicate, you know, communication and a bit of education on what a short-term rental is, whatever HBO or Airbnb is, and other than that. I don't think it's really, you know, I don't think it's been a good use of our time to have us go and, and go through every single one. It is a good use of, I'd say, city staff time to go and have explained, this is how this uses, you know, this is, yep, they, you know, there's building inspections and everything else. But I guess I don't see a need for SUP for, if someone wants to put a fourth or fifth or sixth Airbnb in Mount Pleasant. I think it'd be a lot different if we were a coastal community in Michigan or something that's really heavy tourism oriented.
So would you be okay with somebody with a lot of money just buying a bunch of properties in Mount Pleasant and turning those into Airbnbs for personal profit for one person?
That would be a really interesting scenario.
I'm just saying.
I think it'd be fascinating.
Because I don't know if I'd be, because that takes away housing for others. If somebody's just essentially buying all the properties right around campus for big campus events.
In, in large, larger cities, it's, it's a big problem to have all that Airbnb stock taken off the retail market.
Yeah, for sure.
Is short-term rental also like, not that we have much of this because I was talking with one of our mission commissioners after a meeting several months ago, I don't know. And she works in this area where one of the things she noticed is that we don't actually have enough short-term housing in terms of being able to like, hey, there's executives who want to come in for a month or two to do something, work with her consultants, but they don't have anywhere that they can actually like rent in these sorts of things. Is that what short-term rentals also encompasses in terms of?
Yeah, it doesn't specifically talk about Airbnb, it's just a time in the definition, a time restriction, no more than twenty days.
Stay hotel or something like that.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, and I did hear that.
Like when, if you have a visiting professor come to the university and they're only here for three months, the, and the university has sort of begun to dis- or has disinvested itself of having housing for people who aren't students. So they got rid of all their family housing and staff and all that kind of stuff. And so then it becomes where do these, where do these people go, right? When it comes to like, because they can't afford to sign a year-long lease if they're only here for a semester or something like that, right?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if us removing oversight of our oversight as opposed to your oversight of short-term rentals helps that or hurts that, I'm not entirely sure. Like I think the situation is there isn't actually enough of that in town, so it's not, like there's a massive impact of.
Yeah.
Short-term rental applications and things coming into you anyway, right?
No, yeah, not a lot.
And I can't think of a section of the code that really addresses that either. So maybe that's its own separate work session.
Secure a rental license as any other rental and the inspection, as Leash said, has to be conducted. The one case that I brought to you, he did have to do some renovations to make sure it's compliant and then the SUP can only be approved after that work is done. So we do have, I think, good standards to make sure that it's not, you know, just a housing led to disrepair, just being rented for cheap, you know? Yeah, I really, I don't see a lot of them popping up. So all of them, let's introduce as a restricted use proposal here. I'm going to have to do some adjustment to the zoning resolution to have a specific place for restricted uses. And then I can just bring all the language that we have for the conditions and go from there. And then I'll be reporting on applications that we approve regarding these and see how it goes. And if, if we ever find an issue with one of them, you know, out of a sudden, yeah, someone bought several property, we can always put it back, of course, takes time to get the text changed, but.
I mean, I'm certainly good to see the language, whatever we come up with, yeah. I'm fine with, in terms of like action, requested action, yes, I would like to see text language, right?
Sure, yeah.
Well, she couldn't just push it through on her own anyway, they'd have to come back to us.
Yeah, you have two other opportunities, the introduction to see the text, to let me know if you want to change anything and then public hearing to make a motion, yeah?
Move to approve this, oh, wait, sorry, sorry, I was just looking for my, I was going second.
Yeah, this is a long day. I'm sorry about that, but, yeah, there's so many items that I heard from zoning for economic opportunity. So the next one is about alterations and enlargements. This one is quite complex, even for someone that's reading zoning every single day. So bear with me. The whole point of this is since I started, I kept hearing that it's very hard to develop in Mount Pleasant and a lot of it comes from existing properties that have a building, you know, on it that is not complying, not conforming and property owners wanting to renovate, do alterations to it. And since the ordinance was approving twenty eighteen until today, staff has become more flexible with how we interpret the zoning regulations. But the points that I'm bringing to you are actually still the instances in which we could go further to make it easier to invest on existing property. The first one is to allow existing buildings that do not comply with current rules to be altered. So here we're talking from general maintenance to facade enhancements or enlarged, provided that such existing non-conformances are not increased. Lot of zoning language here, but the best way to lead this is to talk about the example of a street mall. Let's say you have a street mall all the way in the back of the property, big parking lot in the front. They realize that we don't need all this parking and they want to do an enlargement onto a portion of the street mall. So some stores at the end of it want to expand the footprint forward. Right now, the zoning ordinance is actually, it does not allow that or you could interpret that it allows, but in the past, staff has had said, no, you have to, whatever enlargement you do, it has to come all the way to the property line. So CD four, it's the setback, front setback is between zero and twenty. In CD five, between zero and fifteen. So you're not going to create a weird shaped building, right? So I think my point here is to add a clarification in the zoning text that says, you can work towards compliance, you cannot create a new non-compliance. So you cannot encroach on a side setback if you don't already encroach on a side setback. So you cannot create any non-compliance, but you can work towards compliance, if that makes sense. Another example is the dentist's office that came here on Broadway. They were doing a big enlargement and there was a requirement in the zoning ordinance that said that the primary entrance had to be facing Broadway, right? In that case, they're not changing how customers flow within the building. They were just adding more space, right? So in that case, they had an existing non-conformance, but once they enlarged, they're not increasing the degree of non-compliance. They already didn't have the front door facing Broadway, so they would be able to have done that without having to get a variance to not put the door in the location that we require the enlargement to have the door, you know? So it would help with situations like that. I think it's reasonable and in New York City, we used to have an ordinance that accommodated that kind of work. The building stock was there for many, many, many years ago. So, yeah, and speaking with other experts in the field, goal should be positive progress towards compliance. So I don't know if you want to maybe give me some feedback on that piece and then I can talk about the non-conforming discontinuance provisions and the last item here too, about demolitions.
In New York, was it a form-based code?
No, it was a clean-in zoning.
That's the concern I have about this is just that form-based codes is about how things look. So for the dentist's office, I totally get that, that's, they would have preferred not to do that. But what we're trying to do is create a facade, not for just the building, but for the street. So eventually everyone would comply to the form-based code. So I don't want us to stray or allow straying from that too much because then what's the point of having a form-based code if everybody can just not make it more non-compliant, but they can just kind of ignore it? I understand we should have some flexibility, but I just don't know where that line is, but I don't want wholesale allow people to.
Yeah.
Make those kind of changes, so.
Yeah, it is a very heavy design focused, which is good, it's progressive. I think that you shouldn't be deterring improvements, right? And right now it kind of is. I'm trying to change that, just in how I interpret the rules. So for example, if someone is pursuing an enlargement, I'm going to be looking at the enlargement as enlargement needs to be compliant, but in the past I've heard that staff would even ask that the whole property should be compliant. Staff would even ask that the whole property should be compliant, right? Or if you have a huge parking lot, you're just redoing half of it, just that half triggers compliance. It's not the whole parking lot, the whole side of the building. You know, so I'm already doing that, exercising that by interpretation. I do have a provision that talks about that. But yeah, I guess. In the situation of a strip mall, like, they're stuck.
They are.
Yeah.
I mean, I think if, you know, if it's doing more. Harm than good, I think there should be some alterations to it. I get what Corey's saying, but. I mean, if you're actively seeing it hinder development in Mount Pleasant, then. Who cares what it looks like, right? I mean. Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't agree with that.
Let's have it vacant then, right?
Well, no, I mean, I think the, the whole point of the form-based code when we were putting together our master plan is, I mean, we put a lot of, years worth of. Of input and of all stakeholders in the community, and. There are a lot of differing opinions, but it came together and came together and was formed based on. What the majority of our community really wants our community to look like, and that form-based code really guides. The progress of businesses to develop into that, so that we're not just continuing to, I mean, and, and it. Came about because we want the walkable community, and the walkable community means that businesses aren't like on the. Back end of the lot with a massive parking lot in the front, you know, that we're developing so that. People can easily get around and in and out of businesses, and, and so that's what it's moving our businesses to develop into. I mean, we're, we're looking at, we're not gonna say, oh, here's a strip mall. And in order for you to have your next business, you have to tear down the end of the building and rebuild by the street. I mean, we're not gonna.
Oh, I'm not saying that it's a wrong or anything like that. I'm not saying that you didn't do what the community wanted you to do, right? But now we're kind of seeing that it's.
Although.
Needs a little facelift.
I would argue, though, that all of those same comments were in place before that form-based code really was even put together. That people couldn't, I can't develop, I, it's really hard to have a business here, it's really hard to open up, and all of that was. Very vocal before. Us saying, please develop your businesses closer to the street.
And, I mean, we had the mission overlay before the current zoning ordinance to encourage more building closer to the street. And that clearly wasn't enough of an incentive, so that's why it's a requirement now, because it's the only way it's ever gonna happen. And I personally think, I mean, mission's less of an eyesore than it was, but still an eyesore, and just. Giving in doesn't help that.
I don't think it's giving in to anything if it's trying to. Help get people to reinvest if that's a big issue. I don't think that's giving in. I think that's trying to.
I'm skeptical it's an issue. I mean, I don't think the vacancies.
I haven't seen, I mean, she's saying it's an issue, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, I think there, my, my understanding of it, and obviously I haven't been here as long as all of you. Is that some property owners hit a pause on, I'm not even gonna, I'm just gonna let my property stand and I'm not gonna do anything. And we're seeing this investment, really. I'm not sure, I, maybe this could potentially be more of a marketing thing as opposed to a zoning tax change, you know, maybe just. Continue to do business as I've been doing and. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, because I think we probably picked out a couple of strip malls and those type of things, but what about? A popular restaurant in the area that wanted a patio outdoor seating for the summer, but because it was going to have. Enclosure, windy top or something like that, it was a patio with a, a running over top or something like that. That triggered, you know, that's a modification of the building, we had maybe the entire building. Was given a twenty thousand dollar project, and now is that a one million dollar project or something like that? What about another major financial institution that was saying that wanted to add five hundred square foot of? I don't think this is, there we go, that works. That wanted to add five hundred square foot of, of extra office space. It was told that they would have to bring everything forward, and in doing so, their current drive-through for that financial institution would no longer work. There was no way for them to get it to, to fit, so, you know, there's some other. Problems out there that I would say, like, we're missing some opportunities out there if we continue to be so restrictive that any modification. Triggers our zoning ordinance in that those properties within certain areas on certain streets now have to essentially. Deconstruct and then reconstruct right on the street front.
Yeah, yeah, I think like if we were in a very good place market-wise, you know, yeah, let's go forward with. Having the stick as is, you know, but it's not looking great, so. I think I just wanted to clarify that to Aaron's point, so. The idea here would be that no one can. Decrease the level of non-comformance, like a very, very simple example, I'm replacing my windows, I can put smaller windows. I can put slightly bigger windows or the full storefront kind of windows, so let's say it's a retail shop, requires seventy percent of glazing. And let's say they are thirty and they want to do fifty, it's. Progress towards compliance, it's not the full thing, but it's still better than what we had. If we don't have this, then they're just gonna keep the thirty percent. So that's the, the type of. Work that I'll try to accommodate with the, the change.
I don't know where we like poo-pooing like the work that was done with the zoning, that's not what this is about, it's, you know. Like, everything should be kind of looked at and. You know, modified here and there, that's, I'm not here to. Do that at all, so don't think that's what I was doing, I just. Problem was presented and that's.
I see it as, you know, we want to have a balance, because, I mean, the businesses pay a significant amount of tax to the city, and the city needs that too, so I don't think we. Are trying to keep businesses out of the city, but I think we also have to balance it with what. We got all this input on for the new code too, so. Just trying to balance those two things without just going wholeheartedly one way or wholeheartedly the other way, because I mean. Make sure every developer, if we just said, you know what, we're not gonna have any rules, you can just do whatever, you'd not get no complaints, but if we. Put in a restriction whatsoever, there's gonna be complaint, so.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, so find a balanced approach.
Yeah, I'd say, echoing what Corey said. You know, one of the things that we all find is the planning commissioner, municipalities, there's some people in some groups who lobby at City Hall regularly. There's also some people who never come to City Hall. And so being mindful, I think about that sometimes when we see people who are speaking out on any, you know, typical public comment period too. Is that there's, you know, this, times a silent majority of people who aren't actively lobbying, who do, you know, make sure that you're including, you know, the whole. Citizens' voices, and so that's why I think it's good that, you know, Corey's, you get a historical context, even applying commission longer than I have in, in thinking about. You know, some of these decisions in the past and, and trying to balance, you know, what you want for a community for a wide variety of stakeholders who are never gonna fully see eye to eye.
Yeah, 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 I can see how my public. Or I guess the assessment of the public opinion is pretty narrow on the interviews that I did with developers, property owners. Real estate agents and so forth. What I've heard is that they didn't feel heard when the zoning ordinance and master plan got approved. I don't have the full picture of it, but I totally agree as a planner, I agree that even during the master plan and zoning ordinance. Conversations, we didn't have. The, you know, folks that are maybe working so much that can't attend meetings, and so we need to be mindful of that. But yeah, I think I'm not trying to undo the zoning ordinance in any ways. It's just that we have building stock that doesn't comply with a rule that got put in twenty eighteen. And how can we encourage more development in the right direction as opposed to just have like a bar? That it's, right now, it seems that it's just stopping investment, and we just need to push a little bit to get a little bit more investment. That works towards compliance, if that makes sense.
Makes perfect sense.
So I'll try the text and then we'll see how it goes.
So just for yours, there's the bar you said, so we're gonna be lowering the bar as that, as that we're at?
So the, right now, let's say, any modification triggers compliance with zoning. We would say modifications of existing buildings that have non-compliances. Could be done, provided you don't create or increase the degree of that specific non-compliance. So again, the windows, they would be able to go from thirty percent to fifty percent.
Or thirty percent to thirty percent.
Or thirty percent to thirty percent. But not thirty to seventy. Corey is not there.
I don't envy you trying to write this.
Do you want to be, do you want to go with Corey or this line or? I don't know.
No, I think, I think what you're, the way you're moving is the right direction. But I'm just curious how it is gonna work in the real world.
I think that's where we need to see text at upcoming, you know, you just say, if you give us, give us more than one option with text, and we can look delineate between those. Shades of gray that the different texts are trying to clarify for us.
Okay. I do need to reach some other points on this one, I'll jump to demolitions just because it's related to the discussion. So demolitions, it's basically the text, if I interpret the text as this, it says, any demolition triggers compliance with zoning, so like. Let's say you're removing a roof and just doing a completely new roof. You need, the whole building needs to comply with zoning, which is kind of crazy. Usually municipalities have a percentage of demo that can be done.
And ours doesn't? Was that in the old code? I thought it was fifty-one percent before.
Oh, it's not in the code right now, and I believe that with the Isabella Bank on High Street, Jacob may have exercised. The fifty percent rule, even though we don't have one. Because it's, they're demolishing quite a bit of the building, you can still see the walls, but like the roof, everything's coming out. So yeah, I just wanted to know if you want me to add fifty percent, it's pretty standard in other municipalities, so if you demolish more than fifty percent. Then you have to basically demolish the whole thing and build it again. Of course, developers go around that, you know, they. Do like just slightly less, so they don't trigger it, but it's just the way it is right now, it's very, there's a lot of teeth to it.
Certainly, it's not reasonable to require reconstructing the whole building just to replace a roof.
Okay, so I'll provide clarification in the text and, and good to know that the previous ordinance had fifty, yeah, or more than fifty. More than fifty. And the last one is timeframe associated for non-conforming uses, so. Right now, the zoning ordinance says, if you discontinue your non-conforming use for more than one year, then you can only put back a conforming use. There are so many different ways you could tackle that, I'm used to two years as a rule, and we even increased that timeframe to six years after the pandemic. In New York because of the emergency, and that's just because we have a lot of non-conformances here or there. Here, I think the case that got brought to my attention is the drive-through window for Taco Boy.
Everyone's favorite.
So if you have, drive-through is technically a use, right? Because it's a use permitted by SUP, so. If you discontinue that for a year, then you cannot have it in the same location. Two years is pretty standard out there, so just proposing to change it to two years to get a little bit more flexibility. But I don't have other specifics.
I mean, in, in that specific scenario, I mean, they didn't even have. Half the minimum requirement of length of the drive-through, so it was like, it was way out of compliance, it wasn't even. Close.
They, they hadn't used that drive-through in years.
No.
Like, two years wouldn't have been.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know.
There was a lot of non-conformity things with that one, and yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a little, it was something we discussed quite a bit, I mean, it wasn't. Just a.
Yeah, we discussed it, but it wasn't really something that came before us either, so.
Yeah, I don't know, I guess I'm looking more to your opinion if you saw any issue with this particular provision, since I'm touching non-conforming. The non-conforming section.
I think a year sounds fine to me.
Yeah.
Leave it at this, okay.
I'd agree.
Okay. Thank you, almost there. Okay, this one is fun because it has some drawings. The last one, so this is about residential requirements for attached garages. So right now, we allow attached garages only in the back portion of properties, so the third law layer. And then we do allow them to encroach the front portion of the lot, the second law layer, and even, even six feet. At, in the first law layer, so slightly in, in front of the building. Provided it's architecturally integrated with, into the overall building design and, and the garage is less than fifty percent of the total width of the building. So the fifty percent basically means, if you consider. Let's say this, this is a semi-detached building, if you cut it in half, this portion here would have to be at least the same. Width as the garage door. In order for this to be permitted. This is a provision that aesthetically, if you're thinking about a single-story house, makes sense, you don't want to see. Garages, you want to see buildings, you want to see homes, so. I understand that from, because of, you know, the farm-based code goals, but what is doing in reality is that it is not. Able to accommodate what the, how's the group called? The Home Builders Association calls starter homes. And what one particular property owner, Joe Olivieri, wants to build out there. The one thing I have to say about starter homes is that in my conversation with the Home Builders Association. They were saying that starter homes are usually one-story. And nowadays, folks prefer that the living, the, the living area, the living room is in the back. Facing the rear yard, so the way they configure, they put the garage and then in the back, they will put the living room. As opposed to how current or old buildings are with the living room in the front, and then the garage is in a detached building in the back that. Mostly, most folks here don't use that as garage, it's just a storage. Anyhow, so the more modern way to build is with the garage in the front and then leaving space in the back, facing the backyard, so you can have that view of your backyard. And then from Olivieri, he wants to do duplexes, and this is what he, he sent to me, so mostly two stories. I don't think the aesthetics of the fifty percent. Being less than fifty percent, it's such a big deal for two-story homes because you have a whole second story providing windows, roofs and. Other elements, other features of the design, so. I would say that maybe we carve out an exception that two stories don't need to comply with the fifty percent. And potentially revisit the percentage to reduce it a little bit, I've seen. Several images online and with an architecture degree, I was like, forty percent looks awesome, like, we don't need half, you know? And one could do a more detailed analysis on building code minimum with requirements for internal spaces and things like that, but. Yeah, I, I would loop in the Home Builders Association to just see. You know, what's the footprints that they work with for starter homes. And how, are you comfortable with the two ideas, carving out two-floor buildings? Potentially reducing the percentage for a single story?
I have another proposal. I have another proposal.
Another proposal?
Yeah, so instead of having the garage be less than fifty percent of the total width of the building. What if we made that fifty percent of the total square feet of the building, because that would, for a sec, for building us two stories. That we wouldn't have to have a separate thing for that, because clearly it would be less than if the garage is underneath. And it would still be about what the code. Is already asking, I mean, you might have to do some, because there's no way somebody's gonna make a garage that's. Five feet deep and super long, I mean, I don't think the fact that it's a square footage as opposed to a width would really matter, because. People still need to fit cars in there.
Talk about a square footage ratio of garage versus house.
Rather than.
Would someone build a tiny house with two-car garage? Would someone build a tiny house with two-car garage? Is that?
It's, oh, it'd still have to have the square footage that it would be at least.
Yeah. It also would have to be at least the size of the garage.
Yeah.
So, so just the ground floor?
Oh, you're not gonna have a garage on the second floor.
Sorry?
You're not gonna have a garage on the second floor.
No, yeah, but I, uh, the calculation of the house portion, would that be just based on the ground floor or both?
No, both, for the whole house.
But I don't know if anyone would build that.
They do quite a bit and, and like, um, like their condos, I mean, like townhouses where they have the garage on the, on the main and then you go up a flight of stairs and.
Yeah, there's one on the last.
But if you compute all the living space and the garage space, the living space is less than the garage?
No, no, it's, I mean, it would be equal to or more than the garage space underneath it.
Yeah, but then why, I, I, I don't know if you need the rule then, you know what I mean? That's what I'm trying to get. I don't know if anyone's gonna build more garage than house.
No, the garage would have to be less than fifty percent.
Cause the point here is what you see from the street. So the rule is trying to focus on the facade and what the facade does.
Hmm.
Garages and anything related to vehicles is not giving, uh, scale to pedestrians, right? So the idea here is to have more features that are more scalable to the pedestrian. Um.
I mean.
So I don't know how that would tackle that.
My house has the garage on the side and then you can have more windows on the front, but still the garage. I mean, I, I know that could be difficult depending on the lot, but have the entrance on the side of the house so that there's more windows on the front.
So.
It would still be, you know, below the second floor.
Entrance to, to be, the entrance has to be at the front, right? The primary entrance has to face the street, the current zoning ordinance.
Hmm.
Yeah. So that's another issue.
Yes, I'm trying to get my, get a sense of how much of an issue this happens to be. And with that, I'm seeing the fifty-six, you know, feet mention, saying at least fifty-six feet, not knowing the mentions of just how big a garage goes in there, maybe it's a three-car garage or something else.
Yeah.
The, the larger number, but, um, I'd be, I guess before seeing, you know, language on this, I'd, I'd be wanting to see a stat on, for lots within city limits that are currently undeveloped and allow, you know, residential by right, uh, how many of those undeveloped lots are, you know, less than fifty-six feet? Um, I just don't know. This is just like a, you know, a one-off case of, of a person who is, you know, doesn't like this or is this, is this a systemic problem?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, that's why, because it requires fifty feet and then you would need fifty-six, yeah. So I could, uh, probably do a GS analysis on law width, so just vacant parcels, right?
Yeah, in residential areas. I can't ma, can't imagine it's gonna be a lot, we're pretty built out.
And, um, I do know that most of the lots that are at least developed, or well, not most, I can say that. I had customers stopping by with lots that are wider than fifty feet and asking, can I do a subdivision and sell and do, sell a portion of my lot for infill development? That infill development will have to be at least on a property that's fifty feet wide. And so I think it's important that the zoning ordinance fits within the minimum required lot width. And if it doesn't, I think we have a problem by design. And I think this is a situation that we have a problem by design. We're not gonna, because of aesthetics, we are deterring more, um, housing options, which is a big policy that has been a city commission policy for so many years and is pretty strong right now.
I'm gonna go back to kind of the, I, I think it's kind of a separate thing in my mind. It is, um, as far as like this with the garage to house ratio versus the garage in front of the house.
Mm-hmm, thank you, yeah.
Um, I think that's quite a bit different. We went through a whole work session on that. We, and, um, I mean, it was primarily that it was, uh, a discussion about just having it as a right to have the garage smack in the front of the house. Whereas like throughout the majority of our community, our, our neighborhoods have alleyways that, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna have a garage, it should go to the alleyway. It really shouldn't be like right in the front of the lot in front where you don't, it, it's, it's not really conforming as far as like what the aesthetic of the neighborhood is gonna look like. So, um, that was kind of more of where we had approached that, of having that continued following with the garage setback of, um, and a certain developer has their plans primarily with the garage located just in the front. So it was kind of where they.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I don't know, I.
In my understanding, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but the six-foot encroachment onto the front yard, something that was added after the zoning ordinance got approved, right? Uh, because of pushback or maybe when it was about to.
I think it was, yeah, I think it was continued from before.
Oh, from before. But yeah, I think it wasn't in the original proposal from the consultants. I think there was no encroachment onto the first law layer and then there was a lot of pushback, uh, from home builders and others. And we added the six-foot, which is not a lot and I think it works well aesthetically. And yeah, I think those are very different issues and this wouldn't be changing the encroachment aspect of an attached garage. It's just really about the ratio of what you see from the street, from garage door versus everything else. I mean, from what you said, we could think about still keeping the same rules for, if you have an alleyway, then if you don't, um, start, it gets complicated when we do a lot of, you know, changes and options like that. But if you feel really strongly about alleyways should put the garage in the back, um, I don't know, I'm not sure I would go that route, but just putting it out there. Any, any final thoughts?
Well, I think, I think, I, I feel like there's probably gonna be agreement to waive the requirement for two-stories, two-story houses as per the design. I think we're okay with that one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so the, we're just talking about single-story houses at this point. Now, if they want a two-car garage, they can have it if they're, um, both compact cars, right? Or is that too complicated? Probably, I haven't.
We can keep the standard of fifty percent for single-story homes, um, if you don't see an issue. Well, I, I think the main issue is the law width that's required.
Hmm.
Um, so.
Good question that Matt raised, yeah.
So I could do what Matt suggested, just take a look at data. Um, but again, my opinion on it is that the zoning ordinance shouldn't be in conflict with the rules within itself. So I think forty percent will get us to fifty feet of width. Um, and it doesn't look so much worse than fifty percent.
Hmm.
If you're okay with.
Well, I, like, like this, this specific example, and maybe this is just me flying my flag and to give away, just sounds like whining to me. Like maybe you could change the design of the house to fit the lot. You're the developer, right? So it doesn't seem like a big problem to me. Um, but like the waiving it for like the second story or whatever, that I don't have any problem with that. But I, I don't think there should be any change in the first story, like, like deal with it. Right? Like, like, it's, like, they talk about, like, it's a modern thing to have people want this. My in-laws lived in a house built in a suburb in Metro Detroit and was built in the sixties or the seventies. Looks exactly like that, right? Like, like this isn't new. And so, like, I think they could, if he's got a problem with a, with a fifty versus fifty-six type size, I think you could, rather than having us make a bunch of changes to the code, you could change your design, right? And so I'm less eager to agree to that, I guess. And again, I might be just flying my, I have opinions.
No, thank you for sure.
Developers, so like, yeah, that's, that's how, where I stand. Like, I'm perfectly fine to consider these things, but like, yeah, that, that doesn't fly with me.
And I don't, I don't think it's an issue of, uh, that's hindering houses being built to Mount Pleasant. So I think it's, it's fine to keep it as is.
It's so, yeah, so design, so.
We got this gentleman over here.
So.
Your microphone, sir.
Hopefully I can be heard here. So just to let the planning commission know that I think the interest, at least from inside of City Hall, is one of our goals from the city, or from the city commission, is to address, um, affordable housing essentially. And as we start to add square foot to housing, those kind of things, add some of these amenities, that adds costs. So it's just one of the things that we're wanting to have the planning commission, I would say, consider is just knowing those second stories, these extra amenities do add cost, which then has to be passed on to the consumer. So it's just one of those trade-offs to consider.
Oh, I mean, but looking at the design, I mean, it really wouldn't change the, I mean, if it's the overall, the same square footage of development on the property, it really wouldn't.
Yeah, if, if I put it into simple terms, the only issue is that you wouldn't be able to build a small home for a family with a two-car garage. You need to have one car parked outside, one car inside.
Well, if you want it to be affordable housing, don't put a garage on it at all, just put the house there. A garage adds cost.
Change the sign, change the design, novel, novel concept.
Is there any different, I mean, is, is this related to just attached garaging?
Oh, what?
Is this just attached garaging or?
Just attached.
Okay, because I was gonna say, even there's like a number of houses that because of the alleyway, is that the garage? I mean, we do have a number of houses that are single-story houses and there's like a two, three-car garage behind it, separate on the alleyway. So, I mean, you know, that, that's a very common design throughout our, our community.
Yeah, and, and going farther than that, even attached garages in the back, they can exceed the fifty percent threshold. So if they're like in the third law layer here, that's fine. It's just that the market wants living spaces in the back as opposed to the front. And then, um, I saw some, uh, plans that the, the Home Builders Association shared, like L-shaped kind of plans. So they said behind the garage, it's always nice, uh, to fit and easy to fit, uh, another bedroom. So it's a three-bedroom as opposed to a two-bedroom. Um, yeah, anyhow, but this is mostly about two-car garages. So it's a very specific thing. Um, and we already allow them in the back. So this is more like for the front portion of the lot and how that looks from the street. So I think the second-story exception would allow for duplexes, which do get into errands. Well, however, if you do want to do ranch-style duplex, then this will still be an issue. It's just that for Joe Olivieri particularly, he shared this drawing with me and it's not a ranch. Ranches are very friendly with senior populations as a, a style, so.
Well, there's a lot of ridge, ridge in the Swan neighborhood. There's a lot of duplexes in there that are, there are two units side by side with garages on either end that are flush with the front of the building and it fits in the lot just fine. I mean, you, unless you're paying attention, you don't even realize it's a duplex because it just looks like a ranch-style house.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It's doable.
Yeah. Yeah, but yeah, you do need a wider lot to fit the two-car attached garage with the ranch-style building if we keep the fifty percent. That's, that's what it is. Okay, so keep fifty percent and carve out second story.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right.
And pending, pending data that might.
Bring data. Mm-hmm.
With the, with regards to the fifty and fifty-six, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, when you think about the geography where there's open lots in city, I don't, others under over fifty-six.
I don't have any idea.
Like.
Anyone want to move to?
Yeah, I'm gonna move to a germ for a second.
All the favorites. Meeting adjourned.